All right, welcome to our regular meeting for the City Council of City of Perry, December fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. Let's call this meeting into order and begin with roll call.
Coldiron.
Here.
Rupp.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Coffee.
Here.
White.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Worthen.
Here. All right, we have quorum, and I'll, I'll offer our invocation for tonight. Father in heaven, we're grateful for this opportunity that we have to come together as a city council. The opportunity that we have to serve our city and our community, and Father, we ask you to bless us with, with discernment that we can have a productive meeting and discuss the needs of our city, and be able to come up with solutions and be open to one another's ideas and insights. Father, grateful for your son, Jesus Christ, and for this time of year that we have to reflect on him and his sacrifice and his birth, and Father, these things we pray for in the name of your son, Jesus Christ, amen. All right, let's begin with our consent agenda.
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, you have a motion and a second. Roll call when you're ready.
Coldiron.
Yes.
Rupp.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Coffee.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Worthen.
Yes. Item number four, comments from those assembled pertaining to items on the city agenda. Don't think we had anybody. Let's move on to item number five. Proclamations, commendations, reports, and inquiries by governing body. Any proclamations for today or commendations?
No commendations at this time.
All right, we'll move right along to our council reports. Word one, Scott, Gloria.
I've had several people raise their concerns and frustrations with the streets. That's something that we really need to take a look at, a little deeper than we have in the past, and probably get something.
Moving on now. Okay. Word two.
Yeah, they're really, I mean, so the many houses are still going up. Starting to slow a little bit, but I think it's because they're working on the insides of them now, getting them all finished. I'm not sure what the delay is, but that light post and that live wire is still hanging down.
Getting an update on that?
Nope, haven't heard from Brian on it lately.
Okay, what were you waiting on?
He was waiting on somebody to pull.
Gotcha.
I can just, I can tell it's live because I can see where it's connected and it's within reach, so I just don't want anything happening.
I'm making myself enough to contact him tomorrow to see if that made.
Okay.
I'll wait with you tomorrow on that, Curtis.
Okay. Thank you.
Jeff?
The, I talked to Lee today about the baseball fields. They got the building moved from the transfer station to the, to the ball fields. They've got, it's moving along, they've got the electricity hooked up, there's some other things they want to do. When they get that all tied up, finished up, Lee will come give us an update.
Good deal, awesome. Thank you, all right. Tenet, Randy? Nothing, all right. Derek, Sammy?
I don't have any dinner report.
No.
Doctor still not on the mat yet?
I don't think so.
All right. All right, well, next up, we do have a report from councilpersons Davis, Rupp, and Coldiron, they went to Blackwell recently. So, Randy, tell us about it. How was your visit?
I'll let Sandy start.
They deferred to you while you were gone, that's what you get for stepping in.
I'll start and let them fill in, how about that? Does that work? If I have to run out, you gotta take over, does that work? All right, so we all went up, kind of got the VIP treatment, it was good. We, you know, we initially planned on looking at the new fire station number two, which they put into an existing building, and that was a very nice facility that they were able to put, was it three or four rooms into? And they basically run full service out of there as well as the downtown fire station. Along with some recovery and things that they, I think the Pride Inspector Services out of there that they've done elsewhere. And while we were there, they went and took us downtown and showed us the streets they'd been doing. Talked about how they're getting those done with some of that using some of the equipment that we currently have, and we got to talk about the equipment that we don't have. I believe it's twelve blocks, twelve blocks for about two hundred thousand dollars.
Well, they bid it for over a million first.
Yeah, the, well, yeah, yeah, so.
So that was the difference.
Big, big difference, so hopefully.
That's tremendous, so, yeah.
Hopefully, we can find some, some ability to do some cross-training or things like that, figure out what we need, equipment we need.
Not to attribute it, looked like very high-quality work as well. We got to talk to their, I guess their superintendent of parks and streets, and he was explaining that they try to do a lot of that this time of year because they can utilize both parks and street personnel because there's not a lot of mowing goes on in October and November. They have a pretty good plan.
Did you see like how much equipment they have that we don't have? Are we, are we, are we close, are we off?
I'm not sure how much, but it's all under roof, they keep all their equipment inside.
It appeared that their, I wouldn't get it wrong, their zipper is actually a smaller size than ours.
Oh, okay.
Their, their asphalt machine is small, but it looks, as far as capability and style, to be similar to the larger ones. They do have a roller, but it was, it was also quite small, and they were being very effective with it.
It was vibratory, they also had a hot oil lay down, or hot oil machine, sorry. That was above and beyond what we have, so the asphalt machine and the hot oil machine were the two pieces that I know we don't currently, currently have.
You have an estimate on the cost of those two pieces of equipment that we don't have? We didn't.
I know a hot oil brand new is about fifty, but I think, I think the best thing for what we're doing and trying to get into, we could probably use, and if our, this is old numbers, but the, the guy that sold us the zipper said he had some inroads on used lay down machines, and they were around sixty or so as well. So about a hundred to a hundred and fifty is what I'd guess for both pieces. Just, that's a guess, that's a total guess.
So at that guess, we could be doing our own streets at that point and making some improvements.
Budget and training and, yeah.
Training, training.
People, the equipment, the people. Personnel, which they've offered to, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was gonna say, so they said it was about twelve streets that did for about two hundred thousand?
Twelve blocks.
Or twelve blocks.
Twelve blocks. Twelve blocks, so.
That's pretty good.
Yeah, that's, you know.
And they get all their asphalt from Pocahontas?
Pocahontas City.
And, I mean, from this corner to fur was seven hundred thousand dollars for us.
Right.
Which is a big, big difference. Other than Curbin Gutter and engineering, you know, engineering and everything else, but.
There's more to this than just ripping out asphalt.
Yeah, I mean, this is it, yeah, but.
Correct, I mean, as far as loaders and dump trucks, it wasn't that different from what we've got.
Right. That's good news. Do you guys want to follow up on that? Do we want to have Christie do that, or as far as reaching out to Blackwell to keep Paul and asking about what?
I think the questions you asked would be good to have answers to, what, what did their asphalt lay down machine cost roughly? I think they told us theirs was only two years old.
So fairly recently they've got that.
And the, and the hot oiler, the pre, pre-oiler, they called it, what those kinds of things would cost, because it would sure be. About a quarter of a million dollars is what we need to finish that up, at, at least fish it up.
I was guessing love, or is that brand new?
Well, no, that, that was some of the better used pieces that were out there.
With material included in that?
Well, yeah, and so, equipment-wise, I, I think if we planned on about a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar number, we'd be okay on the equipment side, it's then materials for the overlay. That was where they're saying two hundred thousand dollars did that twelve blocks, so give or take, you know, figure twenty thousand dollars block is kind of a safe assumption on material. And then we just start down the, the materials, how much we, what budget set aside versus how much we can get done at one time. I don't know if they talked to you about how they were doing it in segments.
I was getting ready to say that, they specifically said they're doing about a block just because they can't keep it warm. And it doesn't, it provides a whole lot less risk, or mitigates a lot of the risk by, by doing it in the segments like you're talking about.
Yeah, so, so one of the things that I've just noticed over the years with the way they do it is the timing of, the time of the year that we're doing it, based on availability of people and staff. And then it's usually a block at a time. Doesn't feel like you're getting very far very fast until the whole thing's done and you've, I'm sure they took it down thirteenth street as, as you came in.
And that's what they said.
And all of a sudden, you looked at it and you go, wow, this is all the way from. Well, Blackwell Avenue is what they showed us in front of them, and it was done all the way to Main Street. And it's a white street.
You know, while we're at it, I want to say thank you to, to everybody at Blackwell that participated. We had the chief, the fire chief, we had the mayor showed up, and, and the city manager, Jerry Wyland, so.
I think it is a great way to go about getting information and to help us with our strategic planning.
Yeah, they were very open and said if we had any other questions, we could get the number from Bryce and.
Will he help train? Or I think maybe use him as free labor for a few days, one of the two.
What was their timeline on like when they did a block, like prep work and everything? How long did they say like how long it took?
Two, two days, but it wasn't necessarily back-to-back consecutive days. But they, they did tear up and haul off one day, and, and then they had an all-hands day for the laydown. And, and they, but it was one, one block at a time.
Okay.
So they do two, one block in two days, and again, it wasn't necessarily consecutive back-to-back, but they they would get it prepped and ready, and then come back and lay down in a day, and, and all, everybody in his department was required to be there and help that day, even if they were departers, so.
Kind of, at, at least timing on how it has seemed to work out, about every two weeks a block. You know, it's kind of a safe, by the time they get, you know, everything in place and get everything done, it seems like about a block every two week, maybe two blocks, but a block every two weeks. It's kind of a safe piece of what you could assume would get done, but everybody's scheduled on time, yeah.
It's pretty better than this.
Do we have any other questions for?
The, the only other thing they mentioned was is most of the streets, of course, I think buried somewhere, most of the streets are repairing, they're just going down to the old asphalt, so that it's, it's already a nice clean road bed attached to.
Right.
Very seldom ever are they going down to dirt.
All right, oh, okay. Do they have streets that have concrete or anything like, like ours do, or?
Yeah, they all do, they've got something. They had a brick.
Brick.
The ones that you guys saw on Blackwell was actually a brick.
They still use a zipper on that, or would they use?
No, well, they, they typically leave the brick.
They don't cut into the brick.
The concrete, they did mention, I mean, zipper doesn't recommend using the zipper to do concrete, but they said it will do it.
It just eats the bits up a little faster.
Right.
So don't hit a manhole, because that'll tear up the zipper, but things like that.
They were, they were very excited about what they rapidly had done and what it looked like, and the money they were saving the city.
All right. Well, thank you all for doing that. Let's continue under our committed reports here. Let's start off with hospital. Do you guys have any meetings recently? Zoning?
I think we're gonna try and shoot to do one next week, maybe.
Okay.
Been some scheduling conflicts and things.
Amen. We've got another committee, drainage?
We're, I don't know, we haven't done anything on drainage, I mean, we're we're supposed to meet out there to
Supposed to take some
To some surveys.
Take some measurements and survey, but I don't know if that's happened quite yet.
Right.
With the holiday and everything, it's kind of
Right.
Slowed everything down.
Have you heard anything, Christie? I haven't heard a big enough answer.
I haven't heard anything.
All right, any other committees that I'm overlooking? I think that was all of them. Well, let's move right along, so we'll go on to item number six, which is a presentation from Noble County Commissioner Jason Keenholtz on proposal, the furnishing of E nine-one-one dispatching and other services. So this is, he's coming up, just kind of a background, so on our E nine-one-one services and dispatching, we've been working with the E nine-one-one board, which is made up of, the board's made up of half of representatives from the city, you've got our fire chief, police chief, and myself. And then from the county, we've got Jason, Jimmy Smith, and Matt McGuire, and it's also on that board. And this board oversees the, the dispatch services and the nine-one-one funds. So with that, Jason, turn it over to you.
Where do you want to start? How far back do you want to go? So we currently have an agreement, and the nine-one-one board, when I started asking questions about that, nobody could tell me when the last time they met, who was even on the board, so I started digging into this, and realized that I'm not saying it was done wrong, but it could have been done better. So I received a copy of the agreement that we currently have, and I think it can be better. We, we've gone back and forth on this, I mean, I've been working on this since January, and these gentlemen sitting back here in the corner, we've, we've discussed it, we've sent this agreement that you all have back to you to ask questions, what your thoughts, what your concerns are. My whole goal is to provide a better service to the community, to our citizens. I have citizens, constituents of every city, Gary does too, so does Nick, so we all share this. So I just want to provide a better service, that's all I'm asking. When people ask me what happens to that money, I can't honestly tell them because I don't know. So that's what I'm trying to solve, that's what I'm trying to provide for the citizens, that's the whole goal behind it, so it's our feeling on, on the county side of it that that nine-one-one board that's made up of both county and city should be the ones that run this program, basically, that's where we're at. And this agreement that we've come up with, I think it's fair, it's what, whatever you guys want to do or what your thoughts are on it, I don't know if you've had time to look at it or not, but I'm happy to answer any questions you have about it. But basically, this agreement would give control to that board.
So I'm not sure if we have the actual agreement, is it in the packet? Okay, so that's not in the packet, what you have in front of you is, is the budget that's been prepared. And then, so, the, and from what I understand, and you guys will have to help me, because I've been on this board for, like today was my first meeting on it. The history on this is that the, the city and the county came together and they, they decided to share the, the dispatch services. And in that agreement, from the beginning, that it was decided that, that the city would take on running the dispatch?
Correct.
Okay.
The city, the city provides the employees, they run the dispatch, the dispatch is housed in the county jail.
Right.
There are some other things tied into that, there's a jail agreement as far as providing beds for the city, for inmates. There's some geosafe software in that, there's a lot of moving parts in it, but that's how it was. And I wanted to be fair for both entities, I realize the county isn't contributing as much as what you all are, and hopefully with this budget, you know, it shows that we're trying to be partners in this. That's, that's the whole point of it, I don't, do you, do they have?
Yeah, they have, yeah, they have a budget in front of them. So take a look at that, so the largest cost in, in these services is the, is the personnel, which is housed in the city, which the city takes care of. The city pays about just over three hundred thousand dollars for the dispatchers in payroll. The city, we also pay for the phone lines through AT&T for that, and then we've, we also own the equipment that's used in the dispatch, and then, as well as, do you guys remember the, the grant for the SAMs software, get the addressing updated? That grant is through, is through the city as well, coming up with operation expenses of three hundred, close to three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And the next little portion that we've got here, the E nine-one-one board budget. And Jason, you'll have to help me understand what this portion is.
This, this is just, I mean, it, it's not set in stone, ultimately, it's up to that board on how they want to proceed, but that's kind of a mock budget that I've put together there. Basically, seventy-five thousand of the expenses, which would be phones and equipment, the SAM software, and then a hundred thousand towards payroll. And then the rest would go into capital outlay, that, I mean, it's, again, that's not set in stone, it's up to that board, basically, to set that budget.
And so that would be money coming from
From the nine-one-one.
E nine-one-one board?
Correct.
Okay.
And then the second part of that there is basically the county's expenses and the city's, the county's contributions and the city's contributions, which is the three hundred and four thousand, which is personnel services. And if you get a hundred thousand from the E nine-one-one board, it brings it down to two oh four six twenty-nine. Now, here's where we get in the weeds, the county portion of that. So I think it's five beds, is it five or four? Four, four beds per day that you guys receive, you have those reserved in the jail currently. There is a cost associated with that, you may not use all four beds, you may use five at times. Nobody's keeping track of that, I can tell you that on this, on the county side, nobody's keeping track of that. If you guys use six, we're not gonna say a word, so. Then we provide the utilities, we just roughly figure that around six thousand. The geosafe software, Matt and Chief Thomas could tell you more about what that exactly is. I'm not familiar with what it is, but it's a service that we pay for, but we provide it to you all, right? And the fire department?
And your government.
Yes. So that's a, we're providing that to you guys, we're, we're taking that expense, so if you add all those together, it comes to ninety-one thousand eighty dollars. So the next column there has the city's contributions and the county's contributions, it's a difference of a hundred and thirteen thousand five forty-nine. You know, it, it could be figured several ways, but there's five dispatchers, so roughly it's twenty-two thousand seven hundred dollars, basically, per dispatching. We're agreeing to pay for a third of the salaries for that. And the way, the way we've come up with that number is we went back and looked at the call logs that's going through the dispatch. Three-fourths of them are city-related, and that's fire, police, animal control, basically. The other ones are rural fire departments and the sheriff's department. If you look at the logs, I mean, the majority of them are, are the city. But we're agreeing to pay for a third of that, that cost, which is that $38,000, basically. And then if you look at the bottom, basically, what you guys would be contributing is the $166, and we'd be contributing the $129. So that's how I come up with that. We've gone over that in our board meeting. Everybody seems comfortable with that. So, here we are, coming to you all, seeing what you think. Now, I will say, in the current agreement, if a computer goes down, anything like that, you guys are solely responsible for that. We want to share in that cost. If something catastrophic happens, lightning strikes, blows everything up, we will share in the cost of that. We're agreeing to that. So that's one of the advantages of what... It's not on a sheet of paper, but that's coming in the future. From what I understand, there's, they call it next-gen 911 supposedly coming. And what I understand, the software that's there now is going to be out of date. It's going to have to be updated. It's going to be a huge cost.
Big grant provided by, right?
Possibly, yes. But, speaking of grants, you guys applied for the grant to update the address. Why isn't that on the 911 board? Why aren't they doing that? I mean, they should be doing that, in my opinion. And, you know, the grant's not a guarantee, but if it, if it does come to that, we will share that cost. We will pay for all the insurance for that equipment. I don't know what that cost is. We won't know until we go in there. We're agreeing to pay for that as well.
We being the county or we being the 911?
The county.
The county.
Yes. It'll be carried on our SIGIF insurance, just like everything else we have.
So, and the 911 board doesn't have any independent funding? It's just what the city and the county gives them?
The independent funding would come from the collections on, on the fees on your cell phone bills and landlines, which, landlines is very minimal now. But that's where the money would come from. The very top number is a projection of what those collections will be. Those come from the state 911 board, Lance Terry. He's the one that gave me that. So it should be somewhere in between there. Not for sure where, you know. As phone plans come on, it'll go up. As phone plans drop, it'll go down, so.
So those funds come to, um, they come to the county?
No, they come to you currently.
Oh, they come to us currently?
They get deposited in the county's E-911 money. And then under the contract, the county transfer, the county 911 board transfers us 100% of those funds.
We collect on landlines. The state collects on cell phones. We don't receive it from the state. You guys receive that directly. Now... So...
So you guys are collecting on the landlines and then the state sends that directly to the city?
Yes.
So that doesn't come through the E-911 entity that comes directly to the city?
Correct.
And then the funds that come from the county for the landlines, that moves over to the E-911?
Comes to you.
Or it comes to us as well?
We collect it, but it comes to you.
Okay.
And you're talking about the top section up here where it says revenue, correct?
Correct.
So the $155,000, it's under county. That's all the balance.
You're, you're looking at what, of the budget that we have prepared?
Proposed budget.
This was the budget, whenever, where the original discussion started, this was a piece that I created that divided out how things were currently operating and where the expenses were currently lying. That's what this document is. This document that doesn't have the lines or anything on it is what the county brought over. So, you'll have to look at this piece. It's not, it, the numbers are, are pretty much the same. It's just, this, this number has some different, this piece that the county's working from has a little different funding mechanism on how, on how the net settlement comes out. The expenses are pretty much exactly the same. It's just, there's a little difference on where each dollar falls in the net cost sharing.
This is a little bit unrelated, but I'm curious, what, what constitutes the city needing a jail bed?
Well, when we make an arrest, we don't have a city jail. We take every inmate to the county. If they're on city charges, what is the rate per inmate kind of average these days?
Currently, we're at $50. And this is projected. I, I believe it's estimated, is it right now, $25 currently is through the current agreement?
Okay. So...
What is, what's the judge certified as your jail bed cost?
I believe we're right at $48 and $49.
Forty, okay.
So, yeah, so we'd have to pay, if we didn't have an agreement, we're paying $48 a day per bed, per inmate. Um, there's nothing that says, sometimes our city judge puts people in jail 30 to 45 days. And they either pay their mind. So, you start calculating that, and that's five bed, or four beds per day.
It doesn't amount to very much money. I mean, I'm just telling you, it doesn't amount to very much money.
November, we had 28 jail bed days.
It amounts to $1,000 a month.
Fifteen less than twenty-nine.
There have been a few times when the judges put, in the past year, put somebody in jail for 28 days. But it, it comes, it comes nowhere near the, the bed credit that's being allocated here. And with the new law that we've talked about, you know, there, there are going to be less and less people go to jail now. Now, now, I don't want to take away the agreement that I structured 15 years ago that traded jail beds for this 911 services, because I thought it was a, it, it was a good thing. And I do think that it's good that we don't have to, you know, specifically, uh, uh, account for it, you know? Uh, and they have been very liberal in, in the manner in which, you know, have allowed folks to be in the jail. But, but if you're taking a $70,000, uh, you know, credit there as against, you know, real money, be, be, because, and I'll just briefly say that all the money that's going into this is appropriated, dedicated tax money. It's 911 money. Half of that comes from peri-residents. And if you had your own 911 center, that money would be your money to do with what you want. So, that, they are allocating that over to their side because currently, we repealed our ordinance 15 years ago. And so all the county money is allocated as coming from their side. But the only non-dedicated, specifically dedicated money that's going through this operation is $250,000 a year of electric revenue sales that are coming from peri-residents and are being transferred from the electric department over to the city to finance this. Okay? Other than that, everything else is a dedicated tax that's coming over, okay? The jail beds are important, but if you allocate the jail beds, they don't amount to much. And I would just say that the city was happy, I guess, to continue this agreement and put in $250,000 of electric utility revenue into this transaction until it was pointed out to us that there was something wrong with the agreement. Uh, and, and, and it awoken, at least from the city administration's side, kind of a sleepy giant. We looked at that, and we said, wow, look how much money of non-appropriated tax money is going to fund this right now. How unfair, okay? So that's what we can't get around in looking at this. The fact that, you know, there's appropriated tax money going to this only, you know, even the jail. Property tax, sales tax, collect three-quarters cent sales tax collected by the county. It's all taxes. The money that's not taxes is electric revenue paid by peri-customers. So, that is the analysis. That is the way we're looking at it. And as far as we're concerned, at least the city administration, we're willing to go pay for our beds because we don't think that that credit is going to come anywhere near what that costs us. That is, if you want to look at this on a dollar and cents basis, that is not the way we looked at it when we went into this agreement, okay? In fact, the city administrator, the manager, was against this agreement. But the reason we entered into it and were willing to put up that money to help run this was that if we didn't do it, we were going to have two dispatch centers with a baseball throw from one another. And that's where we got to. We had decided, forget the county, and the county had said, forget the city. We're going to do our own dispatch center. And that is the public money that has been saved through this by putting this together. You know, in Kate County, Pocket Dispatch, Taco Law Dispatch, Blackwell Dispatch, New Kirk Dispatch. One County, four dispatch centers. In Perry, Noble County, smart. We came together and, and we did it. And so, the savings is not having to run two dispatch centers. There was no savings right from the beginning. It, it erred on our side, okay? We put in too much money right from the beginning. And a manager who fought it, who fought that openly, was fired over it. Okay, was fired by the city council over it. So I just want to point that out. There, there is savings. And that savings is we do this together. We just need to feel comfortable. And I know you council have given us a mandate. And the mandate is no more utility rates. If you can figure out another way to do that, and we've heard that mandate. And so, for me not to sit here and, and tell you that, well, you know, what I, what I think it is would be wrong because you've given us that mandate. So, uh, that's kind of the way we see it. Russ, did, did you have anything to add?
Well, Bryce, I guess I, I would say, you know, from the other side of that, you know, really, based on the history and based on how the agreement is currently drafted, it would be my recommendation that we don't do any modifications to the contract and we just continue on with how it is. Because we will start getting more reimbursement. Right now, the agreement calls for the city to get 100% reimbursement of all E-911 fees received. We can, if we just stick with the current agreement, the way it is, without any changes, we're going to be better off, more money under the current agreement than we will be under this revised agreement that they've proposed that we accept this time.
So, so two things that I agree with. The two dispatches saves money. I agree. And I don't want to go back to that. One thing that you just said is it's costing you $250,000 of electric utility collections to fund this. What I'm proposing is you're going to pay $166,000. You're going to go down. So that's, that's where I'm at. And we're trying to contribute more.
But I'm going to, but the analysis also says that if we don't change the contract at all, we'll be at about that same 166.
Correct. But you will still absorb all the cost of upgrading the system. You will still absorb the cost of the insurance. You will still absorb the cost if there's a catastrophic failure. You will still absorb that cost. And who knows what that cost is going to be? Now, the jail bed credit, I understand that's not a dollar number, but that's what the agreement is. I mean, that's what it is.
I think as a partner, that's something the city's been willing to accept those costs over the last, you know, 15 years.
So, one question that...
I'm not saying it's smart. I'm just saying that's...
That I have, there, there is one concern that I have about that. And it's all, it's up to you if that's what you want to do. But if one of Brian's police officers arrests somebody, is he going to have to make a decision? Can I put this guy in jail or not? And that, that would be the question that I would have.
But the answer to that is each year, we will just fund in our budget a $25,000 number, which is almost double what I've computed our average daily net cost has been for the last two years. So we'll fund $25,000 set aside. And if we exceed it, we'll exceed it, and we will come back and make a budget amendment as, as time goes on. So our officers won't be at jeopardy of being able to, or have to worry about putting somebody in jail. That's what you're talking about.
That's a question I have when you, you say we have four beds a day. Are there always four empty beds for city?
I'd love to share, Francis.
Most of the time, we normally do not run into over, or exceeding our capacity at all. So we've never run into that as a question.
So there's always at least four there for city?
Is there.
And reserves.
So, this is interesting conversation, but I've not seen the previous or the current agreement. So I, I don't feel like I can make a decision.
Yeah, I understand.
Um, until I see those.
I wouldn't want you to.
The, the other question I've got is, it looks like the total revenue is somewhere around $240,000 between county and city. Is that correct? Or am I now looking at the wrong list again?
Total, total, yes. Well, that includes some grant money for capital outlay. Operational, right now, we get about $120,000 a year under the curve. With the new revised 911, I've estimated that that'll be about $155,000. The state's telling us it'll be $180,000 that's coming in, between 180 and 200. I, I just was not near as optimistic in, in budgeting for that. But the $240 included some grant money. So operationally, we get, we get 120 right now that, that we're dealing with. And that 120 coming in versus the operating expenses of right at 370. Because right now, we're paying 100% of the expenses, you know, the operating expenses of 911. So that 370 leaves us short about $250,000 a year, which the city has always covered and made up.
I guess that's where my question is leading, is, is... I, I come from an environment where you pay for what you can get. What, what happens? We pool our money, and that's all we spend? What, what do we give up? Where do we cut back? What, how do we make that work?
So, so here's...
To me, that's the rub.
Here seems to be the, the issue. 911 service, to provide it, takes 24/7/365 coverage as far as personnel goes. And that personnel cost comes at a cost of just, say, $300,000. It's a little over $300,000. No matter what, whether they take one phone call or whether you take 10,000 phone calls in the year, you have to provide that cost. So you have that, and then you have the phone lines and the equipment, at, at about $65,000 a year to make it happen. So, those two numbers, whether the city did it, whether nine, whether the county did it, whether the 911 board went to a third party and said, hey, we're going to contract out and you come do it. Those three numbers are all going to be there. Now, what, what comes out of it? And, and how do you do that? Well, the bigger you are, the more economies of scale you get, the better, you know, you can defray that cost. can defray that cost. You don't have to have one person there. You get to a bigger operation, they may have three people there, but those three people, you know, can do a volume of X calls based on population. There are studies that tell us all of those things. But at the end of the day, no matter who's covering it, somebody is going to have to pay for $370,000 a year, period. I don't care what it is, that cost is going to be there. Now, how does that 370 get worked out? The way it has been worked out for the last 15 years is the city said, we don't want two dispatch services. We don't want this setting out here competing against each other where the county's over here paying 24/7 for dispatch and jailers to set and count and head count for the jail. And then we set over here in our building and have the same piece. I mean, that total cost, just in personnel, is going to be 600,000 plus then the extra. So what happened was, we said, fine, let's cut that back. But whenever we cut it back, what happened was, the city said, you give us all the 911 money and we will then finish paying all the operating costs of what comes out. And so we ate at that point. And this is where Roy got upset about the situation was, well, in this agreement, you guys are going to expect us to pay $250,000. And there's nobody else going to pay for anything else in this piece. And that's what we have set on for the last 15 years. Now, whenever you look at it, at the end of the day, there's $250,000 that needs to be covered, give or take. You know, I'm using current operating numbers. I'm not using what the projected budget is. But there's $250,000 that needs to be covered. How do you divide that 250? Do we pay 125 and the county pay 125? Do we continue to pay 250? Or what portion of that allocation are you as a council willing to make it up? What I will tell you is, we don't have any other restricted funds to go to pay this. So where do we go? We go to our electric utilities and we raise rates and we cover the $250,000. And then you guys get gripped at because we keep on going up on rates. That's what we're trying to say. Hey, at the end of the day, segregate this up. Bryce's jail bed and all, that's great and I'm glad he did it and it worked out for so long. But guys, just like I tell you related to utilities, if water is, has an expense, let's raise the water revenue to cover that expense. And the same thing. We've got dispatch. We know what it costs for dispatch. Let's look at the funding and let's fund dispatch as dispatch. We've got police. And if Brian uses jail beds, that's a police issue and we need to be charging fines to pay for that. We don't need to be using a subsidy electric rate to pay for somebody that Brian wants to put in jail. And that's what I'm trying to get back to in this, is a true cost allocation where if it costs us $250,000 excess, how are we going to fund that 250? Do we pull it all ourselves? Do we ask for money from the county in true dollars? How does that work? And that's what I would like to see. It'll be a whole lot easier for all of us to explain to the constituents that here is the cost and here are the revenue sources that fund that operation. And then nobody will be in question of how that money came in or did you really get the benefit for this versus that? You know, we will know exactly what we're receiving and what we're paying for.
I'm kind of simple on these finances. You know that, but I'll say one thing. You said we are out $250,000. That money's already been allocated, so we're not going to have to raise utilities to raise funds for it, in my opinion. The county, it looks like, is offering to give us $129,080. That's half of the $250,000. Now, to me, that looks pretty simple. We're gaining money without having to raise any utilities or anything. Isn't that, isn't that simple in there? I mean, there's probably more...
So here's where it changes. Yes, you're right in that. But here's where it changes. That 250 cost changes because of the restricted revenues that are available. We assume that 250 cost with restricted revenues at $120,000. If restricted revenues go to 180,000, shouldn't that $60,000 all come into the pot to pay for dispatch first and then divide the remaining cost?
That's what I propose.
But then he's also saying they're going to cover the cost of the insurance. They're going to cover, you know, all these other things. To me, I'm simple, but it just, it looks like he's trying to be fair to me. I don't know. I'm just trying to talk this out because I need to see it too and some of the...
I think to Randy's, sorry. I think to Randy's point and your point, Lawrence, I don't know. Do you think we should probably, everybody gets the agreement? We have some sort of education?
Yeah, I agree.
Because we got this, but not, we don't have a full, we don't have the whole picture in front of us tonight.
Yeah, what I propose that we do is, so I'll get the agreement that's been the original agreement and then what's been amended out to everybody. And then, sort of like what we did with the hospital, we come together in smaller groups so that we can go over it together. I can sit in on that. Jason's welcome to sit in on that as well. Or we can sit down with each of the counselors either by ward. So everybody has time to really look at it together. And we review that. We look at the budget. We look at the numbers. And we get to a point to where this is going to make sense.
Well, I can look at the agreement and I can look at the numbers, but it still seems like there's, I don't understand why lowering our cost, lowering our cost because they're willing to pay for half of it is an argument. I guess I don't understand why, what the, what's the problem there? I mean, I don't understand what the deal is. It's not simple enough for me.
Well, it's the difference in us paying 160,000 and us paying 120,000 a year. You net it out with the extra 80,000, you split that 40. Instead of us committing to $160,000 a year, we could be committing to 120,000 a year. I'm just trying to save us another $40,000.
I thought they were taking away from the 240,000. But when you put all that information together and let us look at it, maybe we can see it more clearly.
I think that's why we're all getting lost here is because... So we're, we're saving, so we're saving 100, we're saving 120,000 and we're trying to get an extra 40. Is that what you're saying? We're getting, we're getting 120, but you're trying to get another 40?
Well, the 120, whatever you net it out in the net numbers. We go from a 250 to a 166 cost, okay? So it's $90,000, a little over $90,000 cost savings is what we're getting. We're not getting $120,000 savings.
If you kept all the money, you would still be at that 166. But you're assuming all the cost of all the equipment, insurance, you're still assuming all of that cost. He's correct. If you took all the money, you'd still, you'd still be at that 166 number.
And what I'm saying, the equitable split of that 166, it's a 160, 120. I'm saying the equitable split on that is split at 50/50 and our number becomes...
And that's, that is, that is a consideration. I'm not saying it's off the table, but what I, the way I come up with that was just the call logs from the dispatch. I mean, that's the way I come up with that number.
But back this up. So take out, let's throw out on the table what it really looks like at this point. If you take out the jail beds and we don't consider those in, and I know you factor them in, but don't consider that jail bed, that $70,000 jail bed credit in it. The end of the day, the cash dollars that are making this work are $166,000 to the city, $50,000 to the county, cash. Cash out for everything other than jail beds. And we say, we're going to pay for jail beds on the other side. 166, 120. 166 and 50, you know? Do those, how do you get those two numbers closer together? Because at the end of the day, that's really what we're comparing. It is better. You're spot on, Gloria. I'm not arguing. Yes, this is better than what we have potentially, but it's still not the equitable allocation. Whenever, whenever I tell you that the city is going to pay 166 and cash out from the county is going to be 50. Because that's really where the numbers play out.
That would basically be a third. Which is what the call logs are.
I think I think I see the picture.
But Randy, the funds are going into account for later projects, later equipment. We've not had any later equipment in the capital outlay. So we're putting money back in capital outlay also. So it's not all going to dispatchers and equipment. It's going into capital outlay. You know, I mean, I use, I use the fire department as an example because that's where I cut my teeth. But the fire department is still using a big paper map. I don't know if you guys are aware of that. But when they get a call, a new guy that doesn't, isn't familiar with Perry at all, he goes to a big paper map and he goes on these hand drawn lines. That's just, that's just a broke system. And with capital outlay money going in, extra money, I guess, you know, at some point, that may be able to be rectified with that extra money. I mean, right now, there's not any extra. I understand that. But that's why there's money going back into capital outlay.
And guys, I'm all for funding capital outlay, don't get me wrong. But I'm, but I'm going to tell you, whenever we're already short money, every dollar that's out there, we need to be spending on active pieces. And whenever it comes time for that capital outlay and those extra things that need to be done, we need to come together and say, hey, this needs to happen. Whatever it is, who's going to pay and in what allocation are we going to pay those? Let's not just save up capital outlay money and just set it aside because there's capital outlet, because there may be extra in the budget. That year, we need to be covering all the costs we can with the dollars that are coming in. If there is capital outlay that needs to be spent, fine, spend it. But let's budget it and spend it in that year. If it's not something that we know is going to be spent that year, I'm not for accumulating money on a losing proposition. Because that money that we're accumulating, the interest and everything else isn't never going, is never going to amount to anything. It may give us a mechanism to fund it, but at the end of the day, we're going to be spending money over here and we're just letting cash set in the bank. And I'm not for that. If we're losing money on something, let's put all of the money towards where the loss is. And then at some point in the future, we'll finish addressing it. It's not responsible, but neither is jumping into an agreement that has a $250,000 deficit in it. You know, that, that's not responsible either. So the best thing I can tell you to do is cut the loss as much as you can and take all the cash you can in the period that you can get it and apply it to those expenses. And then the subsidy becomes less. That's all I'm trying to do, is keep our subsidy as low as I can get it out of your old pockets. Because I don't have a funding source to fund it.
I appreciate what you're saying. And I'm not ready to make a decision tonight. But here's, here's where I am, is I want to do exactly what you're talking about. I want to make sure we're doing the bare minimum that we can, but to still make sure that the 911 system is effective and works. And at the end of the thing, when we all walk out of it, we feel like it's a partnership. And so I feel like I don't have near enough information to make that kind of a decision tonight. Or even, I've got a question about the funding itself. The fees off cell phone, you talked about Perry using the bulk of the dispatch. Does Perry not, as the Perry citizens with cell phones, they also pay the bulk of the funding? Does that all go to the city of Perry or does some of that go to the county here?
Off the cell phones, they go directly to the city.
Okay. Let's, let's talk specifically about this. Before this agreement 15 years ago, the city had collected from its citizens directly 911 fees. We gave up our 911 fee, our direct collection of 911 fees, to pool those into the county totals. And so now it's a county-wide 911 fee. So yes, we collect, but the collection now is no longer allocated, what is city, what is county. It's all one number and it's all for the county 911 project, okay? Under the current agreement, all of those funds come to the city from the 911 board. Yes, they get directly deposited in our account, but that is money controlled by the 911 board. Okay? Under this, under the new proposal, those dollars in theory are all going to be deposited totally at the county. And then the transfer, and it's the state's transfer account just is mapped to us instead of mapped to them. It'll map to them and then they will write checks to do it. But the total dollars that are coming in, the total, in theory, if one half of the dollars are generated from, based on population, are generated from City of Perry 911. One half of those dollars, based on today's dollars, is about 60,000. Based on these projections, would be about $90,000 of 911 fees that are directly city-related. Okay? So if you want to do that allocation and we want to go that route, then under, under the way this is proposing, they would be paying us our $90,000 that was really our $90,000 anyhow. And then they would be paying a $60,000, a 70,000 of county 911 dollars into our operation.
See, the way I see that is, yes, they live in the city limits, but they're also my constituent. Absolutely.
But if we wanted to have our own 911 system, which is where we were headed until I negotiated this, those dollars were our dollars. And they can be our dollars again. I mean, to the extent that you don't have an agreement, you want to do your own deal, those dollars are identified as city dollars. What you do is you just pass the ordinance again and those become city dollars. So what's actually happening here is the county gets credit for, for city residents' tax dollars as a part of their part. That's fine. But it's just another, it's just another, if you want to talk about inequity, you know, it's another inequity where, where you're paying out $250,000 that is not dedicated to this purpose. See, these taxes that they're paying in, most of which is ours already, are dedicated, can only be used for this purpose. Your electric revenue can be used for any purpose. The only one that is putting in any electric or any revenue that is not specifically dedicated for this purpose is the city and it's the lion's share. And I'll just point out one other thing, and this is very important, very important. This dispatch is doing 911 dispatching, but it's doing other things too. Okay? These folks are taking county calls. They're taking city calls. They're taking fire calls. They're doing, they're calling out, they're calling out radio. It's all in the contract. You know, they're doing lots and lots of different functions. They are the greeter. They are the person if somebody comes into the county, they're the ones there 24/7. Hi, do you want to see somebody in the jail or do you want to see somebody over at the police department? Do you have a need? I mean, they're the ones that are, they're reception, okay? And they're doing lots of functions that aren't associated with 911. Now, the county has a county sales tax, okay? A three-quarters cent sales tax, which incidentally, everybody pays. It's another dedicated sales tax, okay? And that, I believe, although we don't have the figures, we believe is grown to $800,000. It may have more money in it than $800,000. It did the last time we looked at it, $800,000. And those dollars can be allocated to those functions that occur there and are part of this country, this contract. What are those functions? It's the greeting function. It's the 24/7 function. It's the giving information function. It's the taking calls other than E-911 function. See, they have funds too that could be allocated, just like our electric revenues are allocated, could be allocated back to this contract. So I just want to make everybody clear, there are dedicated tax dollars, okay? That for the functions that are being created there could be allocated towards this contract, but are not now. Okay, because the burden has been placed on the backs of the city electric utility payers. Okay? That's the way I see it. So, in talking about fairness, which we all should try to achieve, let's take a look at all of the taxes that have been appropriated for the various purposes for which this contract serves. And let's try to use as many different of those funds as we can use and provide, if you want, it's up to you, it's your city, provide some equity in payment. That's what I'm saying. Now, what we can provide you is we can provide you the contract that we initially sent over as amended by their assistant district attorney, as commented on by us. And then a bullet point sheet, which kind of runs down some of this. Perhaps some budget stuff that you can look at. Because it's not fair that you haven't seen those, you know, those documents. So, I mean, we do want to get you those docs. But there is another source of funding. So, and it's a source of funding that has a giant surplus in it that can be used for this purpose and can offset those peri-electric revenues.
And that's exactly what this is proposing.
Yeah.
You know, the whole, I've heard it several times here. It's the city's money, it's the county's money. I want this to work as the 911 board's money. The 911 board does not control this money, currently, at all. I mean, they hadn't met in five years before we started this year. So they don't control it now. The 911 board, in my opinion, should be the ones implementing this. Now, we can get past that and look at the overages and discuss that. But he's talking about dedicated funds. We're proposing that we're going to use some of those dedicated funds. And that's what we're proposing here.
The E911 board is a function of who? Are they standalone?
It falls under the county, but the board is made up of three members from the county and three members from the city. So you have.
There's eight members total.
Oh, there's eight members totals, right.
Yep.
Because on that board, who are the other two? Because you got.
There's four and four.
Four and four. So from the city, you've got myself now, Brian Thomas, and the fire chief, which would be Ben now.
And Amanda.
And Amanda.
And the city manager.
Right, but Amanda's not a voting member, apparently. So the city manager would be the one that's currently vacant. That would be filled with the new person that we find.
The statute does a poor job of describing the purpose of this board. Okay? And so for purposes of this contract, I discuss the purpose of the board. Okay, now, my thought in this area is that it's recommendation and supervision only. One of the main changes that came back is that this 911 board is actually implementing emergency dispatch services, which I don't understand because that has to do with the people that are actually doing it. Somebody has to be the boss, somebody has to be the provider, and that would be the entity that's doing it. So some of it are just words, okay? But they're important words. They're important words. We keep hearing from the county that this board needs to run it. Okay? But emergency dispatch services need to be run by the entity that is running it. I mean, you know, you can't have double bosses. You know, you need to know who is the entity that is running it. Now, they can provide a funding service. They can provide a recommendation. They can get together with the parties. They can go out and solicit grants. And so that's what I tried to do in this contract. It was all original. It's all original language and I tried to set that out. But part of what we got back was this very thing, that this board is the one that is going to be running E911 services. In fact, they deleted the language that said that the city is to implement E911 services. I mean, they deleted that language. So there's, actually, in the document we got back, there was no language that said that we were supposed to take 911 calls. The language had been deleted. There are other side issues. And that is, what if we ever wanted to do our own system? Who owns the equipment? Are we ever allowed to break out our fees again? You know me, I always try to look at every issue because, you know, you don't want to bind future councils. So there's a number of issues that you'll be able to look at when you look at this contract. So, and one of the main purposes, and I think it's important just briefly to talk about that, which I have, and that is, what is the function of this board? I absolutely see the function different than I think the county sees. Okay? I see it as recommending and as a liaison between the county and the city. But that we actually, they have another provision that says that the E911 board can offer dispatching services to other entities. Okay, well, how can they do that? They're not the dispatches. They're not the entity that is running it. But that's what it says. They actually changed the language that the city, like, for instance, if we offered dispatching for the tribe or for someone else, they eliminated that language and said that the board actually is the one that does that. So there's some fundamental things about this contract in it that I don't understand. And you will see it when I provide you.
Well, I just want to say one thing. This thing's been in operation for five years or more.
Fifteen.
Fifteen years. And I remember when I was instigated. This is not the first time this situation's come up. But this board hasn't been for five years. The reason we're here tonight is because it's not functioning right. I mean, have we known where the money was allocated all those five years? That was designated for, I meant, the 911 thing? Have we seen a chart? Is our city's budget out? Where if I wanted to come to you and say, I'd like to see the E911 figures and where all this money went, the income and the outcome, can you show me that?
Yes.
But if all of this had been done and out front and open for the past five years and it's been meeting and having reports on a monthly basis and having the communication between the two, we wouldn't be sitting here tonight.
Well, we've got to start somewhere. Got to start somewhere, since they haven't been doing it for five years.
I think this goes back to a lot of things that we've been trying to change.
But the one question I wanted to ask while I go is, as a comparison, wouldn't the E911 board be similar to our planning and zoning board?
Well, that is exactly the way that I envisioned it. You don't get a lot of instruction from the statute. So the parties really have to decide. But I will tell you that the first contract, 15 years ago, did not do a good job of really empowering, you know, this board and giving its function and that. It really didn't. It really did that as an afterthought. It was more of, you know, the city gets the money, the city, you know, knocks it out. And there was provisions about the board because it's in the statute. But this contract does, at least the way I initially wrote it, it does give a whole, two pages of duties to the board. But they're recommending and liaison. And they're certainly not operating the E911 services because, but that's how we got the contract back. We got it back that this board would be the one providing the operation. That's what the language says. And it deleted us from providing, which, you know, to me, looked like a mistake. But, I mean, it was what it was.
Sorry to interrupt you.
No, you're fine. I understand. But what I was trying to say, I'm like, well, yeah, let's go ahead and change it. You know, that's not what I meant when I say all these things that we've been trying to change lately. What I mean by that is, here we are again in a discussion that could go back and forth all night and we don't even have the info in front of our face we need to make anything happen.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. I think we're kind of going around in circles here. And so again, kind of going back. We'll get this information out, the original agreement, the amended agreement, and then that bullet list. And then, sort of like we did with the hospital situation, let's get together as a council in smaller groups. We can go over that together and get our thoughts together. By next council meeting, we can get this back on the agenda to have a further discussion with that information in front of us and have us time to actually review it.
Could I ask for one more thing?
Yeah.
I'd love to see three years of what the city's taken in and what the city's paid.
Yep.
Yep.
I've got all 15 in the spreadsheet that will run out 15 years of that piece. And let me wrap it up with this. The public doesn't need to worry about 911 services. We will continue to provide 911 services. This isn't something that's going away. We've eaten the $250,000 a year for the last 15 years. It's budgeted for 24. And honestly, I planned on budgeting it for the next 15 years that we were going to be losing that money. So we're going to do this. The city is always committed to doing it. We will continue to do it and we'll continue to fund it at this level until you all as the board and the city council tell us not to. But right now, it's in the budget. We're continuing on operations. There's nothing going to change related to that. So don't, please, public, you've heard a lot, if you're listening to this, you've heard a lot of discussion. Don't worry. 911's continuing on. If the city has to do it at our back, we will continue to do it at our back because we know that it has to be done.
And also, Jason, I appreciate you bringing this to us. And again, you know, the E911 board was formed, what, 15 years ago? You guys put this together. But like Jason mentioned at the beginning, the E911 board hadn't been meeting for a long time. They started meeting again. Jason's kind of heading this up and found these issues. And now we're discussing it, we're dealing with it. And this is going to be a partnership between the city and the county. And, I mean, all in all, I think it's going to come out pretty well. We just need to get the information in front of us and go through it thoroughly. Not just vote on something. We're going to take a look at it and make it in the best interest of both the county and the city. So Jason, I, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Appreciate it. Lots of new faces on both sides.
Yes, yes. And the, you know, the E911 board, everyone's different from what it was before. You know, we have new council, they have new county commissioners. So we have new parties all the way across that are trying to figure out what was, you know, what was done before and what worked, what didn't. You know, things are different today than they were yesterday. And so we're trying to do what's best for today and then that's going to affect tomorrow in our best interest on both sides.
I agree.
But let's continue on with our meeting here. And gentlemen, you're welcome to stay. You guys can head out. Thank you for participation. All right. So moving on to item number seven, acting city manager remarks.
Well, I hate to follow that. Mike, I just have a few things here. Just to remind everybody, next recycle is December 9. Again, with the holidays, there was only one in November. And again, in December, there's only going to be one recycle this month. Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
So due to the holidays, again, there will only be one recycle this next Saturday, this coming Saturday, actually. I had my week, I was looking at last week. But it has slowed down just a little bit and some of it were contributed either maybe to wrestling and people being out or, and some of it's been, it's gotten kind of cold. It's a couple of mornings, a little cooler or so. But we do want to remind everybody to look for us on Facebook. We have Perry Recycles. It keeps you updated on dates and things coming up. So also, I've been working with Tyson. We'll discuss this a little later. But we have a new service that's, they contacted me. I'm like, whoa, okay, whatever. So Tyson sat on with the Zoom and we sat there both going, oh, no way. This was amazing. I wasn't able to make the second meeting. Tyson was. And when he came in and he was informing me of it, Derek and Lawrence just happened to be in the office that day. And we went back and told them all about it. This will update our website, change a few things, and also add an event calendar. It's really exciting. Tyson's going to be, Mike talked about that one because it's a lot of technical stuff. So he knows all about that good stuff. The only thing other I have, it's going to be busy holiday week this week. The city will be closing Thursday at 1:00 due to the snow tubing. Hope everybody comes down and sees us. The snow tubing sets up in our little area. So we're clearing out our cars so they can set up and get that set up and ready for the snow tubing event. I can speak English to my, I promise. Also, just a few other things. We'll also be closing at noon on this Friday. We have our employee appreciation Christmas. Hope you guys can all come and see us. We are, the last couple of years have really been trying to change a few things and get more people pumped up to start coming because people were kind of slacking off and not coming as much. And we really hope we're starting to change that. We have a big announcement this year. If any of you employees are listening, you're going to find out the news. We are looking for next year to hopefully have an evening event that they can bring their spouse. They have not had that one in a while. So we're hoping to get that accomplished next year. A few other closings earlys that I just wanted to mention right off the bat just so it's out there. We'll be closing noon on December 22nd to get ready for the holidays. And we will reopen on the 27th for our regular hours. And we will also be closed New Year's Day. And I am done. If anybody has any questions for me. And Chris, I will be calling and getting an update on that and I'll get to you tomorrow.
Okay.
And the Friday thing is called on file?
Yes. We do have a surprise.
Which?
The Grinch will be there.
On that, I would stress to them, I do realize it's not just a simple, we're going to put a light up and reconnect. I mean, they're going to have to redo the poll.
Yeah, Brian said that he was up there and he, they were going to have to reset that poll.
Okay.
But I will get you an update on that when it looks like that could happen.
Okay.
All right. Moving along, item number eight, CFO remarks and monthly invoice.
Sent you, Matt wants a copy of that 15 year spreadsheet. That is the email to you. I said that to him. Handful of things for November. Number one, continue to work through the audit prep. That's kind of one of the big things that we tried to get out this time of year. You know, so we're working through that. Should be pretty much done with work papers this week, which means that auditors now, whenever we get the rest of the auditors out, to take care of that. Handful of other things last month, you know, that came up. We talked about health insurance. So you guys are up to speed on that. Couple of calls and pieces related to some economic development activity. He even heard most of it in executive session. I don't think anything that's coming out of that. There were a couple of grants, a couple of good pieces that came out. Again, the Department of Commerce for the funding of the sewer piece. You know, I like to re-highlight some of these things. Also, you know, the savings on the water project, the DWSRF. You know, that net savings came in at about $430,000. So about $130,000 better than what we were expecting when we started talking on that piece. And then, shh, 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 shh. Making sure, oh, the, have dealt with 911 on and off. So again, one of the other pieces that we seem to be doing. The other, the other big piece that kind of was last month was related to the hospital and debt payments. He and Justin, I finally got together and got all of that thing lined out. So I know it doesn't affect you guys day in and day out. But it drives. So, I know it doesn't affect you guys day in and day out, but it drastically affects Nita and Christie in the back office, and how some of that was happening. So, we've got all that hopefully worked out, and looking forward. The only thing I have upcoming this month, at least on the schedule right now, is I'm meeting Kathy O'Connor on the 14th to go over budgets and talk some more about financial numbers and where we are and how we've gotten to where we are. Utility rates, budgets were the two main things she had on the list that she wanted to talk about. So, hopefully I'll bring her up to speed, and she gets. Oh, no, she hasn't, you're next, but you know what, what we talked about. So, that's the highlights of what I have.
Good, any questions for us?
Is this a, I just seen the second invoice here, is that for the monthly? Is that a monthly deal or is that the annual?
No, that's the annual, yeah, those are annual audit costs for the audit prep.
Yeah, they keep me busy.
All right, item number nine, presentation of city attorney report and monthly invoice.
I handed out my report, E911 agreement. You know, I drafted an amended agreement months ago and gave it to the county, and they responded about a month and a half later, and I responded within a few days and with comments that have been sent around the city administration, but, and we've, and we've had a few meetings where we've discussed this, but it hadn't come to the full board yet and how we were going to negotiate, and that was really never decided, so, today, it got, it got laid out here in city council, but hopefully we can meet on this and answer your questions, but all of those documents have been and are prepared, and I will get those to you tomorrow on SunLink Alties. I think that we have an agreement on the pole attachment agreement. I believe we're very close in the licensing ordinance, perhaps that can be presented to you on the 18th. On economic development, we got that contract with the last meeting, the economic developer discussed it with him today, and he says things are going great, and that what you did really helped him, and he is working on this every day. I have calls into the residential developer, spoke to him today about the project at the elementary school site. He said that he was going to call me back today or in the morning and give me an update. It was all positive, and he intends to proceed. Of course, nobody has seen any graders out there or any excavators out there, so I'll wait to see what he says, and I'll brief the manager, and she can let you know. Continue to work on ODOT's two-lane road, that is going to happen, I mean it, which is just amazing that that got done, because it was impossible to get it done at first. That's years ago when we, when we did the commercial parks, and this is really good that that's going to happen. This 404 permit application has been resubmitted with a mitigation report. We're waiting on the core response. There's a telephone meeting on December 11th. We're hoping that after that, there'll be a 30-day comment period, and if everything goes well, that 404 permit will be issued, and we can move forward on our Perry Lake project, so. It hasn't been the, I mean, it slowed us down for a year, but if this goes through, it will, we'll be back up and running. And we have acknowledgement from the state and the feds that all the money is being held, and they feel that this is a project that, which we're going to implement. I have a provision here, a paragraph here on the McMurtry water allocation. We have been pumping and using that water. It looks like we can get to 65%, which is much better than we had anticipated that we would get by year end, and this tells you some documents on allocation.
On that note with Lake McMurtry, Brandon Robbins walked in the other day, and thank goodness we got the other pump. As they were installing one, the other one started having fits. So, they got the new pump all hooked up, and now they're going to look at, the problem with these is they're not, the parts are no longer available, so they have to actually get the whole thing. I wanted to update you on that, as you had asked that, excuse me, before, but. So, we will be getting a new pump again.
So, Bryce, those allocation numbers add into the future? Are they still based somewhat on our usage, or are those guaranteed?
Those are provided under the water, under the, under what we got allocated from OWRV, but usage is very important. Usage is very important, and if you, if you don't use it, you can lose it, and, but, those allocations are the way they are, but allocations can be changed, so. And then finally, I prepared some agendas and stuff, I've done lots of other work, but this, these are the basic, major projects that I've been working on this month.
SunLink, you know, we said we're getting closer, but are we still requiring like-for-like fiber?
Yes. Yeah, no, it's, it's, well, actually, no, I mean, as a cable company, you know, they're going to provide, yeah, they're going to provide cable. I mean, they're going to provide what they have provided, that's fiber back, but cable, but, I mean, they're losing such a large piece of the market share. You know, this needs to be economically driven and not driven by, by us, because our ability to, to implement anything by way of licensing and contract is, a lot of that has been taken away by the federal government. The truth is, is that the federal acts have done this. They've exchanged to the cable companies automatic renewals. They've made the renewals almost automatic unless you have proven by notice and opportunity to be heard, and it given them notice and opportunity to be heard of faults in their performance, and you've done that consistently, and fairly automatic renewals has been traded with a 5% franchise fee. That's the whole purpose of the federal law. The good thing is what we never anticipated, and that is that a company would come in and do a fiber-to-the-home network, you know, which has just been, you know, fantastic, and has driven their numbers down, and has driven their franchise fees down, but has provided a much better service to the public. But, the agreement looks, I mean, it looks like what you've seen before. I attempted to get some changes in future subdivisions, and I was ineffective. And I don't disagree with the fact that the, I had said that I thought that we had gotten that over at Enid, you know, a town 10 times our size, and when I actually called and checked on it, Enid didn't even get that. And so, I paralleled our language with Enid's language.
Even though we required it, the company that came in, I mean, that's in the agreement.
Yeah, but, you know, they are able to take care of the advantages, okay? The state law doesn't say anything about them having to, I mean, the things that are better in that agreement, by state law, they can adopt. It doesn't say anything about the disadvantages or the things that are better to the consumer, they must put in. In Texas, there is a form franchise, and every city has to follow it. And I'm surprised now in 2023 that the Oklahoma legislature hasn't adopted the Texas model. We still have ability to do some things. In Texas, there's no ability to do it, I mean, it's, it has been rampant takeover the regulation, the regulatory process of cable TV. But, I have gotten us as much as I believe that we can get, and today, they made a few changes on the pole attachment agreement, but they were all acceptable to me. They were very small, putting in words like reasonable and things that I couldn't. And we'll see if we have that to the 18th.
Okay, any other questions for Bryce? Same, that's a gentleman over, item number 10. Consider approval of agreement with Aptig for the creation and operation of a new website, mobile app, and social media management tool and payment of $5,645, with payment from general government and authorized termination of agreement with current provider as appropriate. And so, for this, we've asked our friend in the closet behind this.
Yeah. I don't get to come out of the dungeon very often.
You want to go push buttons?
No, no, it's good, it's good. As long as everything goes wrong with that, we're all good. So, just a little background, about five years ago, five and a half years ago, we implemented it in our current website. My personal policy is that we don't look at making major changes to the website more than every, about five years, because you get people accustomed to where things are, you get them trained, and then you're like, hey, we're just going to change it all up. Thank you, Microsoft. So, it's been about that time that we start looking for a new, a new website. Our present provider no longer provides municipal government websites, among other things. So, I started looking earlier this year at, at a different web service, doing it in-house perhaps. We had some meetings with some other web providers as well, that just didn't work out very well. And then, excuse me, we, Christie and I met with this company a couple weeks ago for an initial meeting, and they not only do website development, they also do app development. So, that's another thing that I know that the council's looked into or has asked about in the past, past couple of years, is having a city app for our citizens. So, I went into it anticipating being the bad guy, being her muscle, and saying, thanks but no thanks, we're, we're, and I'm not, I'm not a pushover, and I'm not easy to impress, especially when it comes to technology stuff. These guys really impressed me. The flip side of that is I have a terrible poker face, so when I am excited about something, I have a difficult time hiding it. So, I had some questions about some of the backend operations, so I had a second meeting, and that's the one that Christie referred to. I had a second meeting with them and one of their engineering department to kind of go over more about how the backend works, especially on the web design side. And again, I was very impressed. They have a very good system, it's robust, it's flexible. It does everything that I would want it to do, and then some. So, we have an opportunity to grow with the technology as well. So, that's kind of where we are, of course, I got some numbers from them. They came back with some numbers that I thought were reasonable. I also don't like to spend any more money than I have to, so. The development cost is normally $9,500, and they've discounted it to $1,900 to the end of the year, which is pretty significant. I'm sure part of it is just marketing, and part of it is also realistic in that they deal, or have dealt primarily with schools up to this point, they're branching out into municipalities, but, so most of their development happens during the summer. They want to encourage development to happen not in the summer, and they're willing to give a discount to people who are able to take it. So, pretty significant discount there, and then annual cost about $7,490 a year. Presently, we pay about $2,400 a year for our current web host. In the past, we have paid more than that as part of the agreement with them. So, it's pretty in line with what we've been paying. It is significantly cheaper than some of the other services that we've looked at that I won't name, but we have looked at a number of them, and all of them were in the, you know, for a custom website, $20,000 to $25,000 development cost plus annual fees. They're, they're big, and they have a big apparatus behind them, but the cost is also there. These guys are about a 300-strong engineering team based out of Little Rock, Arkansas, which I was impressed that Little Rock, Arkansas, had that kind of a technology business today. So, yeah, that's, that's kind of where we are with this. The thing that impressed me most, and it's something that's been brought up very recently, is the community calendar. When they were pitching that, they were pitching it like, hey, you know, we also have this calendar function, I was like, that is amazing. It's like, the calendar? Yes, that's, it's beautiful. It's like, oh, well, I didn't think it was that big of a deal. I'm like, no, you don't, I do, I understand how difficult it is, because I've been looking at it recently. It's not easy to come up with a beautiful, functional community calendar, so I was very excited about that. The app functions the same as the website as well. Changes that are made to the website, to the app, the community calendar exists on both. There's a third point to it, that all of our social media is managed from a single point, which is what they call Thrill Share. So, a single post will post to Facebook, will post to the website, and will post to the app simultaneously. So, less work for us. We can also designate people beyond city staff to do things like that. So, we can designate community members to handle the community calendar, we can designate other people within the city to handle specific areas of Facebook or their website. They encourage, and I would pull back on it, but they encourage that each department runs their own section of the website. And if we had technologically capable people in all of our departments, then I would as well. But, I think they primarily deal with communities of 20,000 or greater, so they probably have that kind of staff, but.
But Main Street or those could go in and have.
Exactly.
That was the cool part, is the entire community, we could put all events in one place, and we could have people from each entity posting those events, updating and changing them, and then the community has one place to go to look and see what's going on with the community.
And the calendar is really only as good as the information that's on it, exactly. So, it keeps the city from having to bear the total burden of keeping that updated, you know, or being the arbiter of knowledge, you know, it kind of shares the load out there.
Well, if they have Main Street and those, and the schools and stuff like that, just those entities have charge of changing it, you wouldn't want to do it anyway.
No, exactly, exactly, yes, absolutely, absolutely. But, you know, we can set up a forum where if someone wants something placed on the calendar, they could recommend it, and we could, yeah. So, but no, Main Street, the Chamber, for sure, those are two big organizations. I don't know if the school would be interested, they have their own calendar, but if they were, that could be another one, and then the city would handle city stuff.
So, can you link school websites and Main Street, anything, to this website?
We can.
Or from it?
Yeah, yeah, we just can't pull data from their websites, but we absolutely can and should have links to those. And along those lines, you know, we already have a bill pay system, so obviously, we would be able to link back to that as well for it. Matter of fact, with the app being a dedicated mobile app, it'd probably be easier for people to get to it, because it's already there, but.
It's searchable.
And it's searchable, that is, and it's, oh, I just lost the word, scalable. That was another thing, that our current website has a mobile version and a desktop version, but it's not, if you scale it down this small on the desktop, it doesn't look like the mobile version, so.
Well, I was very impressed with the presentation, what they said, not that I'm smart, yet to understand.
That's why I had Tyson come in on the meeting, because I wasn't going to be able to stand all that either.
But I was just really impressed that they were so detailed, and really wanted you to know about their company, and it was very impressive to me.
Would we be interested in not only having a Facebook account, but an Instagram? Right, because the other generation does not use Facebook.
Do you, yes, you're correct. Do you, yes, you're, you're correct. If, if it was the will of the council, we could do that. If it was left up to me, definitely not, you know? Part of the goal of having an app is to get away from social media completely. So especially for people who just aren't interested in the day-to-day of social media, now they would have an outlet. Right now, they don't. Councilwoman included, so this would give them an outlet and hopefully kind of shift our focus away from social media. I don't think that we should pull out of social media, because I think it's a very valuable resource, and you're right. We don't have Instagram, we don't have Twitter, X Twitter, whatever you want to call it.
Yeah, I don't think that's really big anymore.
Yeah, but those are, those are sources that we could utilize that we're not currently utilizing, and that would definitely target the younger generation. I've even, God rest my soul, thought about TikTok, but because it's a very video-focused platform, I'm not entirely sure how we would leverage that.
So this also says, again, I guess I'd say one of the benefits, you know, you have the app on your phone, you'll be able to get notifications, alerts, so I'm thinking like, you know, when we have a pipe burst, you know, something happened, like instead of posting it on Facebook per se, like, well, we can post it on our site on there. It'll go to both, it'll go to the app, it'll go to Facebook and everything. So if people don't have Facebook, but they have the city's app, then they would get notified that, hey, this street is closed because of pipe burst, or, you know, city workers are fixing this, the power's out, da-da-da-da-da, this is the update on the power.
And not only that, and I talked to Derek about this a little bit, because I haven't clarified with them, and I intended to, but I'm almost positive that includes push notifications, which means that if they're, if they allow it, they will get an actual pop-up on their phone and not have to go to the app to look specifically to see if there's a thing.
Yeah, in the background, it says that they'll be able to receive push notifications.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Would we be able to know, would we be able to get data on how many times the app has been downloaded or usage on the app?
Theoretically, yes. That's, that's not something that they brought up or that I asked about, but that's a very good point. I know from a, from a web perspective, we discussed that they use Google Analytics, so we'll get usage statistics on the website itself, I would assume, and that's probably the wrong thing to do, but I would assume that they have metrics on that for the app itself as well. So I personally would be very interested in. So I've been very against the idea of having a city app up till fairly recently, because I thought it would be a waste, because I thought we'd have a very low adoption rate. And when we went to our current bill pay system, the adoption rate on that app blew my mind, to the point where I thought, okay, let's, let's do that then.
Especially if you can just edit once and it goes to all of them.
Yes, absolutely, so...
Edit here, edit here, edit here, copy, paste, copy, paste.
If it was just one of the things they offer, you know, if it was just a website plus the, the social media integration, if it was just the app plus the social media integration, I think, I still think it would be worth it, but the fact that it's all of them combined, I think makes it that much more worth it. Worth it enough that I'm standing here, which is not a thing that I do very often.
I don't know if it's important to council, but tell them about support, first level support type stuff too.
They have 90-second response rate on their chat, and they didn't give me a, like on a call-in, a response rate, but they have a 12-minute resolve rate. So on average, when you call in and talk to someone, first of all, most things are resolved just by chat, but if you have to actually call in, most things are resolved within 12 minutes of the call. They don't have a dedicated support team, everyone in engineering takes a shift in. So the, the people providing the support are the engineers, they're the engineers that are getting feedback from the customers who are asking the support questions, so creates this big loop where they're constantly getting feedback. They have a lot of accounts, some of them pretty big accounts as well. So they're not, even though I had only recently heard of them, they're not a small fly-by-night company, they've been around for a while, they've just been focusing primarily on education until fairly recently, which is a theme that I've seen in other companies too that we've looked at, where they started out in education and thought, we have these tools in education that would work pretty well for municipal governments as well, because they have a lot of overlap, let's start branching out. They're just the only one that, their technology actually impressed me, and their price didn't make me want to cry, so...
And I'm fairly, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Speaking of price, though, where does the money come from? Because we're going to go from $2,400 to $7,490 a year. So that's 5,000 more years, that's my only concern.
Right.
We just got to have to come up with the operating budget, you know, being a penny expense, we'll increase the subsidy.
Do we have it?
It'd be a general government, it's not, don't, don't put this on my department.
Oh, we're going to move it to your department. Listen, Tyson's responsible, it shows up under his name.
I'm sure it's going to be worth it, I've just questioned how much...
And I think that's where I'm leaning, I mean, we, I will say, I would assume we don't get the, anywhere near the support level that was just mentioned. We don't get any benefits, I mean, we were promised certain things with our current agreement that we, we got zero of. I mean, it's...
Well, I mean, my other question would be...
We're lucky we were only paying that, I mean, that was a small...
Was there other companies? Is this just the first one you, this is it? I'm just curious.
No, no, this is, well, this is the first one I, we've talked to that offered an app along with it. We've discussed, we've had meetings with at least two other, two or three other web development companies that offer. And they're, they are big national companies that cover lots of things. Their websites are template-based, which means that they're not very flexible, but it also makes them very easy for non-technical people to use, so I can see where there is an appeal to it. But one of them, I know, for, for a full-blown custom website, start to finish, was hitting between $20,000 and $25,000, just for the website.
Is this a yearly agreement? Like, is this something we can get out of each year, or do you have to sign it?
It is. So what we've got right here with 37, 45 plus 1,900 is six months, so that'll take us through the end of our fiscal year, and then we would sign up for an additional year beyond that. But beyond that, it's year-to-year. So if at any point we decide we want to look, yeah...
It's, it's a maintenance, basically, the same, or the $7,490 is maintenance, you feel, just...
And the, the way that they do it is it's a $7,000 base plus 10 cents per anticipated user or per citizen. So that's where the $4.90 comes from, because we have around 4,900 citizens.
So to your point of, if we have a big population, we'll have to reevaluate what we're doing.
Absolutely.
And then me and Tyson talked, there's another way that we looked at saving if we don't have to social archive as well.
Right, so right now, we have a social media archiving company for free of information after requests, specifically related to Facebook and, I guess to an extent YouTube. I, I don't know the exact numbers on that, but I think it's around $3,000 to $3,400 a year that we pay for them. So that kind of covers us in case we ever do, do that, if we move away from a social media-based platform, where we don't have to archive that, because we don't have...
Save that.
Yeah, we could save on that. That is not a solution that I'm willing to offer, but it is a potential solution.
So the website, you can search for and apply for positions?
Well, you could search for positions for sure. Way that we have an online application or not is something that comes down to HR, and to this point, that's been a big no from HR. They want the paper applications, they want the current process in place as it is. So now, Kristi and I have not discussed that recently, so that is a thing that we could discuss, is whether we want to take online applications. But the moment, it's not a matter of functionality, it's a matter of choice.
So could that, could that be extended even to the app at some point?
Probably, because the, the core functionality of the app mimics the core functionality of the website. So if we, if it was available on the, the website, I would assume that it would be available on that as well. If not, we could definitely link back to the specific place on the website where they could do that.
And the reason I bring it up is, as you can imagine, is as we're growing, we've struggled to try to fill workforce.
Absolutely.
And I've been to several seminars and other things, but basically, they've said, if you want to hire young people, you need to have the application on your website. If you really want to hire them, the application needs to be on their own.
Absolutely.
And so if you, if you're willing to exclude young people from your workforce...
And, yeah, we, yeah, we definitely don't want to do that. I was really surprised, because of my background, I came from a desktop first, way pre-mobile phones. So my, my first priority was always on, what does the desktop side of the website look like? And I was shocked and amazed when we got our current website and started getting statistics that like 75% or 80% of our traffic comes from mobile. So I've had to have a fundamental shift on, we need to make sure that it looks good on the phone first, and then if it looks good on the website, hey, that's great. So this kind of, it, it does that on the website, because they have a mobile-first environment there, but then they kind of guide people towards the app, because now you don't even have to deal with mobile web, it's mobile-specific app.
I just like this, because a lot of times, people really only know what they're already involved in, and so they don't realize that there's other events going on in town to even go to. Or they find out about it later when they see the pictures on Facebook, and they're like, oh, well, I didn't know that was...
Absolutely, there's a...
But on top of that, you know, as far as, when we talk about our economic development, when people come into town and they ask people, they get the same kind of answer, they get the answer that that person knows about.
Right.
And they don't know about everything, but then you can be like, well, check out the app, or here's the app, you know, and now they have somewhere to go where they can see everything going on in town, and it just gives them another avenue and more options and choices.
Absolutely.
Transparency.
Right, and that was one of the core things in our strategic plans, the communication and transparency. This is a platform that we could use to really put information out there to the community. I mean, so many people use apps, and I mean, those notification, those push notifications and alerts...
That's, that's a big thing right there. Push notification on emergencies and things like that.
But even for us as a council, like if we're wanting to put, if we're wanting to give information to the community as a council, this is a platform that we could do that, you know, be like, you know, from the council, here's some information on the hospital, on the E911, on, you know, on whatever. We can put information on there about things that we're discussing and we're dealing with as a council for the community to see. And it's a centralized location for it, easy to use, user-friendly.
Searchable.
Searchable. Yeah, so if somebody wants to go back and be like, oh, what was that that they talked about? They can search E911 and have everything that we've posted about that, and they have all the information right there at the fingertips.
And because I've, I've only had, you know, meetings with them totaling about two hours, I don't know the full depth of their technology. It's possible that we'll be able to incorporate metadata from YouTube in that as well, so that may be part of the search functionality as well, I don't know. If not, that's something that I would definitely recommend to them moving forward in the future, because I think that would be very valuable, because we utilize YouTube pretty significantly. But yeah, make that information available, make it easy to find, make it accessible so that people can be informed.
And it is somewhat focusable as well, depending upon where you go, and like calendar, for example, may look different depending upon the information that you're trying to display. So you can make it focused on what, what, what the customer might be trying to get to.
Does our current website, does it just have a link to the YouTube feed, or is the YouTube feed on the web?
It's embedded, it's embedded on the front, yeah.
So we can have it embedded in this one too?
Uh, yeah, I would bet money on that.
And then on the app as well?
The app, I don't know about. I'd have to verify that, I wouldn't want to say no and then be wrong. The website, definitely, they're going to have a YouTube embedded, but if it's available on the app, I would definitely let you know, because that would be very cool. Even if it's just, you know, ideally, it would be a link to YouTube's app, and they would open it on their phone. But something will be available there, whether it's...
A link or...
Yeah.
They do have a fairly big presence in Oklahoma even, so, City of Mustang, ran across Tonkawal Public Schools uses them, I mean, there's... What do you want, Oklahoma?
Would we have a, a, a thing on a lot of this, says powers by Aptig or something like that, or whatever?
You know, I don't know, because I haven't looked at that specifically.
True, sure.
I, does it say that? Okay. I, I tend to shy away from those, because that's just, like, we pay them for this service, so...
Getting advertising.
Right, exactly. No, no free advertising, but hey, you know, if you want to get 80% off the development cost, all right, you know, we'll give them a couple years free advertising. Anything else for me? Crawling back into my hole now?
Thank you, Tyson, for all you...
Kind of like they're, I just pulled up City of Mustang's website, and yeah, they've, they've got all sorts of stuff on here about, go to their app, check out their app, they have a live feed on there, something to check out.
Can you apply?
Yeah.
I'm pretty certain I have seen that.
Physicians?
I'm pretty certain I've seen that on their websites. No, yeah, I wanted to pull my phone out and go check.
Did you apply?
Yeah.
He's been turned down, but he...
Pretty sure.
Hey, you can pay your utilities on there, you can pay your tickets. Sort of guys' thoughts, we have that on there for...
I make a motion to approve the agreement with Aptig with a payment of $5,645 from the general government and terminate our current agreement.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion on that?
So I guess one thing I would love is, is that in the next six months, we get Tyson back and we reevaluate.
Yep, yep, agreed.
I think, with something like this, I, I think we'll get an idea fairly quick, I mean...
But that'll force us to look at it again.
Right.
Yeah, because we've committed to six months.
All right, roll call.
I'm just excited, sorry. Cold Iron?
Yes.
Rupp?
Aye.
Williams?
Yes.
Brown? Coffee?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Marshall?
Aye.
Davis?
Yes.
Worthy?
Same.
I was reminded, Worthy. Worthy's taken care of.
Item 11. Consider approval of lease agreement pertaining to 1323 Elm Street with Grand Lake Mental Health Center Incorporated.
Were we not getting any money previously? It was Stillwater Medical Center that was getting that?
Yeah, Stillwater Medical Center had the sublease to it.
That's right. And so now this would be coming to us.
That was annexed out of the agreement book. When they did it all, it now comes back to us.
Yep. So same tenant, we're just now able to charge more.
Yeah, we're, now the money will come to us instead of going to Stillwater.
Is this the same amount that they were paying for...
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion to reconsider the approval of this agreement pertaining to 1323 Elm with Grand Lake.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. Let's have a roll call.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Rupp?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Worthy?
Yes. Okay. Item number 12. Consider approval of resolution number 2023-12 of the mayor and city council for the City of Perry, Oklahoma, authorizing and establishing the City of Perry Christmas Lighting Electric providing for the public purpose, providing for the amount and limitation on rebate, as provided in Exhibit A.
I'm just trying to keep this tradition going. We actually had somebody call about it today for a time.
Well, they're lighting up right this year.
How many is it last year?
Oh, I'd have to look. It's usually averages rather between thirty to fifty.
And this is a continuation of what we've always done?
Every year. It used to be a light contest with Exchange Bank, used to have a lighting contest. And we did provide the rebate, but now they don't no longer do the contests, so.
And so what is the, the, what do you have to do to actually get the rebate?
You come in and fill out the application. Where it's just a piece of paper, so I don't know who to make credit to.
I guess I'll go ahead and read this for the, for those that are watching. Applications must be filed by December fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three. Program is limited to the first one hundred and fifty residential and fifty commercial customers who apply and are approved. Any approved applicant shall have their Christmas lighting display in place no later than December fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three, and shall display their lights through January first, twenty-twenty-four. Any person whose application is approved and displays their Christmas lighting, as provided here and above, shall be entitled to a credit on their electric bill or on the electric bill of their designated recipient, issued by the city on or after February first in the amount of twenty-five dollars.
So does that mean like, if you don't want to take the credit on your electric bill, you can give it to someone else? Is that what that said?
That's kind of what it sounded like, yeah.
I think, I think we did that one here, because people wanted to be able to give that to someone else to give it.
In the spirit of.
So that was something we added, I think. I, I remember something like that.
Yeah, so it says, any person whose application is approved and displays their Christmas lighting, as provided here and above, shall be entitled to a credit on their electric bill or on the electric bill of their designated recipient, issued by the city on or after February first.
I think the marshals are pulling power grids. Lights when I go by.
I make a motion to approve the Christmas lighting.
Yeah, we had a motion, we had to say.
I'm sorry. We just had some extra discussion.
Third motion.
Third, fourth, fifth.
Everybody's in agreeance.
That's a Christmas spirit there.
Cold Iron?
C.
Rupp?
Yes.
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Or them?
Yes. All right, item thirteen. Continued discussion on use of the Wise Building as a street apartment building and related matters. Direction, action as desired.
I did get ahold of Nathan at Red River, the one that's, they're actually doing, the ones over here, the fire and the police. He has two options for us, they're still working on the quotes. I did not hear back from him again today. But they are looking at two different ways to go about it. Spot patch, which is, will get us by for a couple more years, he said. Or the option of a total replacement. And he says, because you do have hail damage up there, and if you wanted to look at trying that into insurance, you could possibly do that. So he's gonna give us two different quotes, one just for the spot patching and one to complete overhaul.
And is that just for the shop area, or is that included?
The whole.
The office?
It's that whole building. He said there was some definitely really bad, and he said it's soft. There was a couple, he was up there walking on it and said I had to get off because it was getting a little scary, so.
So the spot patch may not even be that.
He said it would get you by for a couple of years, but you're gonna have to look at doing something eventually.
With the hail damage, I said, we just called in the insurance.
Yeah, so we're still looking at getting the quotes on that one.
Well, they'll prorate the insurance on what they think the agent.
I mean, I'm, I'm not really for tearing the building down. I mean, that'd be the only reason why I'd say we wouldn't even want to do the insurance. But maybe, I don't know, that's part of the discussion we need to have, is the reason why I bring it up. But I would rather look at the insurance thing personally.
Want to give them a call and have Chester come out and take a look at it?
This guy did say he would also meet with our insurance agent to go over the hail damage with them as well.
Who do we have insurance through?
O-Mac.
Oh, yeah.
I think it's important to, to at least maintain the building to where it doesn't leak water.
Yeah, yes.
But, but I don't think I'm ready to say, let's move the street department in there. Coming back from Blackwell and seeing what they've done with that armory, we're wasting space. And for us to continue to use city dollars for a lot that's only one block from downtown, instead of selling it or doing something different with it, doesn't seem smart to me.
Okay, so we'll get to the insurance option.
All right. Item fourteen. Consider authorizing the filling vacant positions of police officers. Just one?
There's two.
Two?
We had two officers resign. One was, uh, his, it was over medical, his mother's in bad health. He needed to go home and be with her, which I commended for. The other one was one of our newest hires, and I'm glad he decided this wasn't his field choice instead of sending him to the academy and investing a lot of money. And so we're down a certified officer that left, and we're down an officer that was not certified. So we do have two positions open at this time.
How many do we currently have?
Uh, we're seventeen, now we're back in fifteen.
Okay.
But one is still.
We have two that need to go to the academy, and they leave in January to go to the academy.
Oh, no, I was saying, we, we still have one that is on reserve, or is he?
Davis?
Oh, on active duty.
Active duty.
Yes, he's on active duty, so. He's, he's due back in February, and when you're gone a year and a half, the military makes you stay home for a month to get acclimated back to society, and he'll be able to hopefully come back March, April, or March or April, so.
And he's included in that count?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes, he's included in that. I'm doing my best to, if we can get this approved. And I've always tried to get certified officers with the experience, but I'm telling you, the twenty-nine years I've done this profession, it's hard to get anybody to do this job anymore. And that's why we, y'all were gracious, we did hire three, we're besting in them, which it's two now. And everybody, I applaud guys coming in, because every one of us started somewhere, somebody gave us a chance. But when you're a small department, we really go out and try to find the experienced guys, but it's hard to get experienced whenever, you know, you can go, if you got experience, go to Stillwater, and you can make twelve dollars an hour more than what we start at. So I mean, it's just, it's hard, but we're, I will try my darndest to try to get certified apps, but we may be coming to a table discussion saying, I can't get any apps. We're gonna have to go out and send under guys to the academy. And I don't want to, but I, it comes to that chock boy to where you have to do something.
How much does it cost to send them to the academy?
When you pay their salaries and everything with uniforms, you're almost vesting ten thousand per officer to send them to the academy, because you're paying them the whole time they're there. And, and what we've always said, so if I hired an officer today and we send them to the academy, they have to give the city of Perry at least two years. If they leave within two years and go to Stillwater or a bigger department, that department has to reimburse us what we're out paying them to go to the academy. And when they go to the police academy, you have to sign a state contract saying, if we're gonna train you, you've gotta be a cop for four years. If you bail out, then they have to pay the state back everything that they got trained on. And I've had one officer, at the time I've been here, that did leave before the four-year, and he made his monthly payments, so he bailed out before the four.
Well, I, I guess I've gotten a little lost on the, on the count. So we approved the fifteenth officer, was the last one we increased the officer count, was that correct?
No, we, we hired three, which got us up to the seventeen, with them with one being in the military. We're.
So we acquired the additional officer in order to fulfill the ditch which agreement.
So have we done that?
Oh, okay.
That is supposed to be starting January first. I talked to Brian, and he's gonna work it out with the staff that will be starting January first, so.
So with the ditch which, that took us up to sixteen, plus the one that's on active duty, that's got us to seventeen. So we're replacing.
The two that just left.
The two that were, okay.
And when active duty comes out, we'll lose, they'll go back to the sixteen.
Okay. Okay.
On turn, is it, what, say that again?
Yeah, say that again.
So we, we're holding the extra position open during.
Which we have to.
Yeah, which gets us to seventeen. But when he comes back, we'll fall back to the sixteen, so as one of them leaves.
Turnover.
Yeah.
Turnover, okay.
Sixteen, sixteen is fully staffed with the ditch which agreement, yes.
Okay.
The one extra is for the ditch which.
So then we'd be approving two.
I want to bring up something, and it makes me a little nervous to do this, I won't bring it mad at me, but. You know, you hear people talking, so it's not me, it's just things I've heard. And they said, you know, we hire a city police department to take care of the city of Perry. And they said, why are they out working on the interstate? Now, I don't know if you're working interstate enough, but to sit around interstate or try to catch people coming off interstate to get gas or things like that. They said if they weren't out there doing that, they'd be here taking care of the city, and we wouldn't have to have so many officers. I mean, that's just, I've heard that a couple of times, so I just thought, I'm gonna bring it up. And then we were told recently that we were overfunding our city police department, which I don't know whether we are or not. I mean, I haven't sat out or looked out for funding. But in all that mix, all this stuff has kind of been going on my head, I think, over, over the years and stuff, you know? And I thought, but I understand, you've got three shifts, and I understand they're putting their life on the line sometimes, and then there's times they don't do a whole, have to do a whole lot of anything. But, and I know I'm comfortable, I've been, I had two men show up at my house the other night that I wasn't sure of, and I called the police department, and they were sure of it. I mean, when these two men arrived at my house and said they were coming, immediately I had a police and a sheriff person pull up there, but they happen to be legit, but I didn't know, and I didn't know why they were coming, and so I love that safety thing that I have called them. They're, they're, you know.
No, we do, we do not work the interstate at all. We do not work the interstate at all.
Okay. Now, I see now, I didn't do all that, so I can comment when people tell me that.
We do have guys that are very high into drug activity, they want to get the drugs off, and they'll sit there sometimes at exits, it's amazing. And I refer back to, gosh, it had to be almost fifteen, sixteen years ago. Car pulled in at Sooners, got fuel, left, continued towards Oklahoma City. Oklahoma County made a stop. They had three point two million dollars in the car, plus all the narcotics. There was their receipt that they got gas at Sooners Corner. All that money was seized, and they bought all new police cars, what Oklahoma County did on that traffic stop. Every day up and down that interstate, we got so much activity going. It's, it's fishing, some guys will sit off by Holiday Inn, and they look for cars coming off the interstate that don't make a complete stop. They pull them over, if they're legit, they're not ever writing a ticket on it, they're just conversing. They do their verbal judo, they smell things, see things, and it can lead to something different. And I only have two guys that really want to do that type, are night guys. They do nothing, they go up and down these streets every night. They're, they told me last night, they go, man, chief, they told me a while ago before I came in here, we are trying to get into something, nobody's moving at night. So they do just go up and down residential's and they're, they're proactive, they're still out and about. But as far as interstate, we do not work any interstate.
Okay, I'm glad to know that, I'm just glad to see that verified. Thank you. I just noticed on my back, watching me, trying to stop my.
I know where you live, so you're.
So these are positions that are already budgeted, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I make a motion to approve authorizing to fill two vacant positions of police officers.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in the second, several call.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Rupp?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Or them?
Yes. Okay, item fifteen, any new business? Item sixteen. Consider convening into executive session to discuss the appointment of a city manager, including the review of any applications received to date.
Someone?
Sam.
Okay, roll call.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Rupp?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Or them?
Yes. Yes.
How fast can you read?
I know, we'll go through quickly.
I've done that with you.
All right, entertain a motion to read the meeting. Second, third and second, roll call.
Goldiron.
Yes.
Rupp.
Yes.
Williams. Brown. Copy.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Worthy.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Copy.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Worthy.
Yes. All right, let's call our perimunicipal authority meeting December 4, 2023 to order and have roll call.
Goldiron.
Here.
Rupp.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Copy.
Here.
White.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Worthy.
Here, we have quorum, item one, consent agenda.
Sum mune.
Roll call.
Goldiron.
Yes.
Rupp.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Copy.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Worthy.
Yes, item four adjourned.
Sum mune.
Roll call.
Goldiron.
Yes.
Rupp.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Copy.
Here.
White.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Worthy.
Yes, item four adjourned.
Sum mune.
Roll call.
Goldiron.
Yes.
Rupp.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Here.
Copy.
Here.
White.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Davis. Here. Worthy.
Here, all right, we have quorum, item one, consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call.
Goldiron.
Yes.
Rupp.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Copy.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Worthy.
Yes.